Right, Quay, you make your way up. Quay is a senior who carries a three-point average in the classroom and plays football and track. Offensively, his offensive stats for football, he had eighty-four receptions, thirteen thirty-four yards, and fifteen touchdowns. He also ran the ball with eighty-two carries, yards, he has seven eighty-five and nine touchdowns. Then he played both sides of the ball. Defensive stats, tackles, he had eighty-three, four interceptions, two pick-sixes, a punt return for TD, and a kickoff return for a touchdown. He medaled in the hundred and two-hundred newest track meets this season, and his athletic accomplishments, selected for the North-South Football Game, is a two-time All-Region, and a two-time All-State. He is also the recipient of the Charal Alumni Kappa Alpha Psi Scholarship, and he will attend Newberry College on a football scholarship. Quote from head football coach Nick Dixon, "Leadership isn't loud, and Quay Clark proves that daily. With a solid 3.5 GPA, a strong work ethic, and a humble spirit, he shows his teammates how it's done the right way. Thank you to his mother and father for raising a respectful, driven, and admirable young man, Quay Clark."
And last but not least, we have Coach David Byrd of Charal High School.
Thank you, Dr. King, Dr. Hale, Chair Birch, and Board members. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize some of our student athletes. Yeah, I'm gonna have to pull those down, for sure. I thought I'd talk a little bit before I had to pull them down. But I do appreciate the opportunity to recognize our student athletes, and congratulations to all the recipients here tonight. Our first athlete is our Female Athlete of the Year for Charal High School is Sharita Burns. I'm gonna ask Sharita to stand up. In attendance tonight is her mother, Tiffany Tony. Appreciate Sharita if you want to come on up. Sharita is a senior, plays the sports of cheer, basketball, basketball MVP, Defensive Player of the Year in basketball, other activities Sharita is involved in, which is the lot, Beta Club, 2024 Homecoming Queen, 2025 Prom Queen, cheer captain, girls' basketball captain, volunteer for Dressed by Grace, Prom Project, HOZA member, Help Tech III program, currently doing her clinicals for her certification. The comment from her coach, Eddie Chaplin, her basketball coach, says Sharita was an all-around player who gave one-hundred-and-ten percent every time. Sharita has the best attitude ever. She's always respectful and willing to do whatever needs to be done. And I'll say this to Sharita, if you've ever seen Sharita play, she gives one-hundred-and-ten percent is probably an underestimate. Always a smile on her face, just a tremendous athlete, no better person to recognize for our Charal High School player, Female Player of the Year, Ms. Sharita Burns. Our next award is for our Male Player of the Year. Our Male Player of the Year for Charal High School is Deshaun Drake. In attendance tonight is his family, Father Lamont Drake and Mother Kai Drake. Lamont, if you want to, I mean, not Lamont, I knew Lamont would come up here in a minute. Deshaun, if you want to come on forward. Deshaun is a senior, played football and basketball for us, has a GPA of 2.86, A/B Honor Roll, All-Region in football, All-Region in basketball, Wide Receiver of the Year in football, Leading Score and Assist in basketball, obviously the MVP in basketball for us this year. Deshaun has committed to play football at Avery University and only play in two years of football. We begged him and begged him to get him out there, and we finally got him out there. And I will say this here, a tremendous turn he had this year in improvement receiver and an opportunity to go play at the next year level by just playing two years of football. His football coach had a quote to say that describes him, Deshaun, as a player who has outworked everyone this year and become a complete player and competitor. And I'd like to just add that Deshaun, just like Sharita, are great student athletes, never any issues with the school, in the school. If you see them, they're more than willing to help. And the one thing I've noticed from both of them is they help the younger athletes. I've seen them take time to be able to do that when younger athletes have been on their teams. Deshaun has grown tremendously, not only on the football field and basketball court, but in the classroom as well. Our Male Player of the Year at Charal High School, Deshaun Drake.
All right, so before you all take a seat, because I know y'all been standing for a while. Once each school votes on their Player of the Year, our athletic directors meet and they vote for one female and one male overall district winner to be the Chesterfield County School District Pepsi-Cola of Bennettsville Athletic Player of the Year. This year, the votes were so close for both male and female district athlete of the year, it was a tie for both male and female. So this year's Chesterfield County School District Pepsi-Cola of Bennettsville Female Co-Athletic Players of the Year are Kai Price from Chesterfield High School and Lilly Beasley from Mackey High School. All right, so this year's Chesterfield County School District Pepsi-Cola of Bennettsville Male Co-Athletic Players of the Year are Jaquavis Clark from Chesterfield High School and Tyreek Wright from Mackey High School. So everyone else can step to the side real quick. Now you all are still special now. We're gonna take a picture with the District Athletics of the Year, Athletes of the Year, excuse me. Now can we give all of our athletes a round of applause? You all may be seated.
Thank you, well done. Now, Mrs. Brunet, Coordinator of Testing and Accountability, gives her awards.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, it is my honor to recognize some of our outstanding, hard-working Beta Club students across our district. First, we'll start with Chesterfield Ruby Middle. Students, when I call your name, if you're here, please come to the front. Place in the Science category, and that was Kendra Olivera. Okay, we will move on to New Heights Middle School. Taylor Graves, first place in seventh grade Social Studies. Peyton Deason, first place 3D Design. Jeffrey Buse, first place 3D Design. Dalen Blakeney, first place 3D Design. Christopher Thomas, first place 3D Design. Anthony Smith Cruz, first place 3D Design. And Isaiah Scott Johnson, fourth place in Sculpture. At this time, I'd like to welcome Ms. Sheri Young, Principal of Mackey High School, to the front to recognize her students.
Dr. Hale, Madam Chairperson, Members of the Board, thank you so much for having me tonight. The Mackey High School Senior Beta Club took forty members to the South Carolina Senior Beta Convention held in Myrtle Beach back in February. These students began working on the different competitions that they're going to enter back in August, and they spend many hours of preparation in the fall. And that preparation definitely paid off as these members represented MHS well and came home with eleven state awards. These students qualify to compete at the National Senior Beta Convention that will be held in Orlando, Florida in June. We have six of those teams and individual names if they would come forward. In the Poetry Division Two, we had third-place winner Ava Aquino. In Color Photography Division One, we had a second-place award winner, and that was Kaylee Chris. In the Black and White Photography Division Two, we had another second-place winner, and that was Eviana Martin. In On-Site Cake Decorating, we had a first-place winner, and that was Ms. Sarah Memms. Coming in third place, our Robotics Team was Tyreek Wright and Gabe Caston. And then in Two-Dimensional Design, we had a third-place winning team of Paige Talbert, Lilly Beasley, Krista Conti, Kendra Olivera, and Carmen Scott. So all of these students will have the opportunity to compete at the national level.
At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Lisa Evans, Advisor at Charal High School, to come up and present her students with their awards.
Sorry, a little short. Okay, this year we took forty-seven students to our State Beta Club Convention, and I would like to recognize those students. We also are going to recognize our leadership team tonight that went to our Leadership Conference in September or October, I believe. And we have a couple other things we need to recognize for our Beta Club tonight also. So we placed in, I believe it's seven different events, including two different ones that we did not actually have much experience in. In fact, it was the first time for one of the events that one of our young ladies competed in. So we would like to recognize Jakar Spivey, who took first place in Digital Portfolio. We also have our Technology Team, which is Jakar Spivey, Jaleah Hudley, Raven Drake, Ally Huggins, and Jaylen Harris for our Technology Video, which we took third place for. We have Jaylen Harris, who took third place in Accessorized Design, and she will be represented by Raven Drake. Jaleah Hudley took second place in Division Two Quilling, and that is the young lady who competed in a competition for the first time ever, in fact, learning it this year. We have Tyler Tolson, who placed second place in Woodworking D2, being represented by Bryson Hunter. We have Claire Vander Ark, who placed in two different events, Mixed Media D1, she took second place. She also took our Biomedical Technology Test for tenth grade and placed second place. She is being represented by Kiana Huntley. And we also had Ms. Hatcher and a large group Performing Arts that took third place, being represented by Kennedy Miller. Along with those awards, we also went to our Leadership, and our Leadership Team was Jakar Spivey, Kiana Huntley, Jaleah Hudley, Ally Huggins, Raven Drake, Dakota Keith, Jerry Lee Holder, Bryson Hunter, and Dennis Nolan, and they placed and qualified to compete at our National in Orlando in Collaboration Connection, Lead Outside the Box, and Project Proposal, and they will be competing against a hundred other teams down at National. I would also like to recognize our entire club for the following, and we are being represented in the state for this one. So if we could have Jakar Spivey come forward. Jakar Spivey, and I'm gonna try, don't cry, and he's gonna get embarrassed because I'm gonna cry. Jakar Spivey will be representing not only Charal High School, Chesterfield County, and the state of South Carolina as the President of the Beta Club for the state. Now, what that also means is he has taken on the charge to compete at our National Convention against, I'm not sure exactly how many at this point, but could be in excess of ten other Presidents from the entire United States to be our National President. If he does make National President, he will be representing not only our state, but pretty much our entire nation as a Beta Club member. He will be traveling to multiple states. He will be leading entire conventions, and right now, National Convention, I believe, has over, I believe they said something like twenty-two thousand Beta Club members competing this year that are registered at the moment. And I'm probably doing something crazy. So if you could give him another end of applause, and also, I'm just gonna put this in, if you would like to support us, please contact me at Charal High School. I take any denomination, checks, cash app, anything you got, okay? Also, we are going to recognize our entire club for the following. We are a, of course, a school of merit for this year, but our school, actually, our club stepped up to the plate, so to speak. We are a grand slam service school for the state. We took second place with almost thirty thousand recorded hours of service, which means our students have recorded over a hundred-plus hours of service for the club. And we took third in the nation this year. So we are the third-highest recorded service club for the nation of Beta. So I would just like to say thank you to my students. And thank you. Thank you very much, guys.
Next, we have Ms. Sowell. She's Director of Middle and High Schools.
Madam Chairman, Dr. Hale, Members of the Board. This evening, I have the distinct pleasure of presenting the Superintendent Art Awards to four very deserving students. Each school in our district submitted one piece of art for primary grades K through two, elementary three through five, middle grades in high school. These pieces were reviewed by a panel of judges, and the winners were selected. It was a tough decision, as though there were so many amazing pieces. The pieces chosen for the Superintendent's Art Award are on display here this evening to my left. And tonight, I would like to recognize the following students and ask them if they would please come to the front and be recognized. And if your art teacher is with you, I would like for you to come forward as well. Our first-place winner in the primary category is Montello Martinez Reyes from Petersburg Primary School. Our teacher is Mrs. Autumn Jack. The elementary category, Jade Burgess of Charal Intermediate School, and our teacher is Mr. Victor Santo. In the middle school category, Sadie Usher from Chesterfield. And in the high school, the winner is Ms. Selena Munyosa of Central High School, and our teacher is Ms. Jamie Bradford. We would like to encourage all of you to take a moment at the end of this evening to view these winning pieces that will be on display. Also, they will be displayed, as we said, at the district office. So congratulations again to all of our Superintendent Art winners. Thank you, and congratulations again. My next recognition will be that of students that have attended either the Governor's School, NETC, USCL, and have graduated or either will graduate with their two-year degree. So tonight, it is an honor and a privilege to recognize this group of young people who have gone beyond high school, and they soon will receive their two-year degree or diplomas. The students I'm going to recognize wanted more out of high school, and they began reaching out to the local colleges and universities and began their college careers. Their dream of graduation from high school with a two-year degree began with the option of taking dual-credit courses before entering college. And they also were to receive their high school credit at the same time as they would get a college transfer credit. So these students were reaching beyond what we had in the school district as our high school students. Chesterfield County School District aligned a partnership with NETC, USCL, the Governor's School, and other community colleges and universities. These partnerships provided benefits to our students, such as receiving a, or achieving a sense of what being in, taking college courses was really like. Most dual-credit courses are accepted as college transfer, and they lead to an associate's degree. Tuition is cheaper and a good way to gain college credit before entering a four-year university or college. Unlike AP Plan to receive a college credit, whereas dual-credits, it's the courses that they take, as well as other advantages. Chesterfield County School District is proud to recognize and congratulate fifteen students who have earned an associate's degree while preparing to graduate from high school. I'd like to ask these students to come forward and be recognized and remain for a photo. Now, these students, most of them either have graduated in the last two weeks, or either they will be graduating within the next week with an associate's degree. So at this time, if you would come forward, I'd like Christina LeConte, Mackey High School. She has, is receiving an Associate of Science degree. Aiden Hughes, Mackey High School, an Associate's degree. Lilly Beasley, Mackey High School, she will receive an Associate's in Science. Xander Hamilton, Chesterfield High School, will be receiving an Associate's in Science. Emily Oliver, Chesterfield High School, an Associate's in Science. Sarah Dixon, Charal High School, an Associate's in Science. Janisha Brown, Charal High School, an Associate's in Science. Ro Gaskin, Charal High School, an Associate in Science. Emma Andrews, Mackey High School, Associate in Science. Mariah Brock, Chesterfield High School, an Associate in Science. And Bradley Dur, Chesterfield High School, an Associate in Science. All of these students will be graduating this coming Friday from Northeastern Technical College with their Associate of Science degree, and then the following week will graduate from Chesterfield County School District, from their schools, with a high school diploma. Let's give this group a round of applause. Now, if, and if you'll remain, at this time, I'd like Christian K. Miller to come forward, Charal High School. She is receiving an Associate in Arts from USC Lancaster. Kamlyn Cutchen, Chesterfield High School, an Associate's in Science. And Porter Kearns, Chesterfield School, an Associate in Science. And these three young folks are all graduates from Lancaster, and I understand they have already been through graduation at USCL, so let's give them a hand. So, let's give them a hand.